So are you live as well or just recording?
Well, can those people hear us?
Yes.
We're all set. We're good.
They're joined in the meetings.
You probably just can't see it on Facebook.
Okay, seven four P M November twentieth twenty twenty four. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Karen, we have a roll call.
John Karimski?
Here.
Barbara Conway?
Here.
Tony Springer?
Here.
Josh Fisher?
Here.
Howard Schaefer?
Here.
Michael Peanich?
Here.
Martindale?
Here.
Pamela Pettis?
So it's the planning board meeting. First on our agenda is the public hearing for special use permit for contracting business Kevin Hannah, five ten East River Drive. Karen, do we have any more information that needs to be read in before?
Please try to talk it with their mics. Um, hold on one minute. I didn't. In your packet, you have copies of everything that I received on comment ahead of time. I have not received any since I made up the packet this afternoon. So you have letters in there from you have an email in there from Matt Palich who is going to speak tonight and explain which those pictures are that he sent. And then we have a letter from Rex and Nancy Knight. And we have a letter from Brian Abrams and Judith Bees. The public hearing notice was published November twelfth. All the new information that I have.
Okay, so I make a motion that we open a public hearing.
I'll second.
A favor or roll call vote.
Roll call vote. John Karimski?
Yes.
Barbara Conway? Tony Springer?
Yes.
Josh Fisher?
Yes.
Howard Schaefer?
Yes.
Michael Peanich?
Yes.
Francis Martindale?
Yes.
Pamela Pettis?
Yeah.
And before we started, like, uh, Mary to, uh, read out.
Yeah, so there's obviously a lot of people here tonight. Um, I think for two different applications. So just to make sure we can get through everyone in their comments, we're going to limit comments to five minutes. That should be plenty of time. Um, we're also not closing the public hearing for, uh, the subdivision application tonight, um, because we're still waiting on coordinated review. So if you have more to say, you can always come back next month, um, but it will be limited to five minutes tonight.
Put your headphones.
Um, you're welcome to come up and give a public comment, but the board will not be answering any questions.
Okay, so if anybody wishes to make a comment for the Kevin Hannah public hearing, come up to the table, sit down, and announce your name and your address and who you are.
Hi. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I'm Peggy Corrie. I live at, um, four, six, five East River Drive. And my husband and I are very concerned about the impact of a large commercial building as is laid out in this special use proposal. The this proposal establishes the acceptance of and sets a precedent for a commercial business in a residential zone. This proposed building would change the existing community by increasing traffic and noise levels. The property was logged for about a year while we were, while we are advocates for forest management. The logging made us extremely well aware of the impact of heavy equipment on our little tranquil neighborhood. And the logging operation was obviously temporary. This proposal would change that to a long term impact. This proposal not only increases the amount of traffic on East River Drive, it also increases the weight and size of this traffic with heavy construction equipment. We are grateful that the speed limit was finally lowered and have felt a little safer, but it's still a dangerous curvy road. And we're concerned that the addition of construction equipment will put residents and travelers at increased risk. This proposal does not address what will be stored or if work will be done on the site. Will there be hazardous or combustible chemicals? Will there be construction waste stored? If workers are present, how long before plumbing is needed to accommodate workers? This proposal of such a large building and its access roads will undoubtedly change the drainage on what is effectively the watershed for our wells. We're very worried about our water supply being impacted. This proposal impacts not only drainage surface and groundwater, but also erosion into the Hudson, as it has already been seen on some of the neighboring properties. In summary, the proposal changes our neighborhood, allowing it to become commercial with increased traffic. Noise of construction vehicles puts our water supply at risk and certainly impacts its tranquil nature. Thank you.
Thanks.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. Uh, I'm Karen Goldberg. I live at four fifty-three East River Drive. Um, we have questions that we believe really need to be considered. Um, let it be clear. I think that we need to believe that property owners should be able to use their property as they see fit, as long as it does not infringe upon the property rights of other people. Uh, hence the need for your planning board and even, um, the zoning board also. Uh, note that the East River Drive area in question is zone residential. The questions we have are the access to the logging road in question is directly on East River Drive where visibility is questionable. This past summer, the county finally agreed that because of the residential nature of this area, the previous fifty-five mile per hour speed limit was reduced to forty-five miles per hour. This was due to the many northbound accidents, uh, on that stretch of the road from Whispering Pines down to the five-ten East River Drive home. What kinds of precautions will be in place to ensure the safety of vehicles accessing the logging road as well as vehicles using East River Drive? Second, what kinds of items will be stored in the warehouse sized building? If it's construction equipment, are we talking hammers and nails? Are we talking bulldozers and heavy duty equipment? Will there be petroleum products that will be stored in this warehouse? Uh, third, if it's used to be, um, for housing heavy equipment, will the logging road have to be paved? Will the warehouse be paved around the cement pad that is built being built upon? Paving on the side of a mountain could present runoff problems to the properties at the bottom of the mountain and on into the river. Has this been addressed? Will the APA or the EPA need to be notified about the potential impact on the river? The upper end of East River Drive has sections of roadbed that are somewhat unstable on the river side. Has the increased use of heavy equipment traveling on those roads been addressed? That becomes a taxpayer issue when there's increased maintenance or repair that will be needed to be done on that area. Environmentally, there are several issues that have hopefully been addressed. They don't call, the plans do not call for water or septic usage, but is that a forever plan? Will there be monitoring to ensure that these, um, things are never changed, uh, since independent wells can be impacted by increased water usage and potentially contaminated runoff? Increased heavy machinery activity brings an increase of noise to the immediate neighbors. And four hundred and seventy-five feet, sorry, is not a noise barrier. According to an internet page, which I happen to stumble upon in the rabbit hole. Lake Luzerne is a peaceful city with tranquil atmosphere, perfect for those seeking a quiet and serene place to live. What is worrisome to me is that the permitted commercial use of residential problem property could be the common, uh, beginning of common practice. The slippery slope, as it were. We want to keep our town beautiful and quiet. Thank you.
Thanks, Karen.
Matt Palich, eleven Hayes Drive. I'm here in support of the request for Kevin Hannah for a special use permit for contracting business at five-ten East River Drive. Construction of a storage building with an attached carport. The property is not in the Adirondack Park. The property is zoned RT for the vast majority, except for three acres, which are RU. Uh, a contracting business is allowed, is an allowed use in the RT zone for the current town of Lake Luzerne zoning ordinance, providing you guys, you grant this special use permit. My residence is directly across East River Drive from the proposed storage building. Because of the distance from East River Drive and the proposed location, the topography and forestation of the land, the building would not be visible from any adjacent property. I've walked the proposed location. I've provided you with pictures of the proposed location. I've given you a western and a northern view. The eastern view is up the mountain, the property belonging Mr. Hannah. The southern view is the same as the northern view. Uh, if you look at the picture, which is the western view, you will see a detente, uh, about three quarters of the way between, between left and right. That is the access road. My property is directly across East River Drive from there. My property cannot be seen. The trees you see in those pictures facing you are fifty to sixty feet tall. The proposed building is twenty-nine feet tall. Uh, there is, and these pictures were taken, uh, yesterday with leaves off the deciduous trees. So with leaves back on the trees, you're not going to be able to see anything. Uh, to me, four hundred and seventy-five feet of woods is more than sufficient as a noise barrier for any activity that's going on over there. Um, I have spoken with, uh, Mr. Hannah regarding, uh, the proposed structure, which he states is solely for the storage of equipment. I see no detriment to the surrounding properties and encourage the board to grant the special use permit. I've heard other people speak about traffic and noise. I think there's a misunderstanding here. Um, Hannah does not have a lot of heavy equipment. He has a couple of pickup trucks, a dump truck. He has a, uh, an excavator, a tractor and a skid steer. This is not a lot of heavy equipment. He does want to store inside as opposed to having it currently stored outside. I was there during the, uh, logging operation. I agree. It was noisy. Um, I questioned our zoning enforcement officer about that and was told that the town does not regulate logging. Uh, the noise was mostly because of the, uh, stripping plant, which is located directly on the landing, right off East River Drive. Uh, the traffic from that operation was far in excess of anything we'll see from the proposal from Mr. Hannah, because there were logging trucks there multiple times per day, every day for three months. Uh, the weight and the size of the traffic, none of his equipment possibly compares to the weight of a full logging truck. So the concerns about the road, we have logging trucks going up and down the road every single day of the week. So the, the weight concern for damage to East River Drive, to me, is, is non-existent. Drainage concerns. Um, the property is four hundred and seventy-five feet up the hill from East River Drive. It is all vegetated property. Anything which is runoff from the building itself is going to be contained by the earth in that four hundred and seventy-five feet. It is not going to reach East River Drive.
One minute.
Uh, I don't understand groundwater and erosion concerns. There's not, uh, contaminating wells. My well is probably the one of the closest wells to there. I'm downhill. I'm over eight hundred feet away. I don't see a problem with contamination of my well. Uh, or erosion or an effect on the water supply of my property or any of the adjacent properties. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
Audio. This fucking audio.
Come on up. That's all right.
Hi, good evening. I'm Kevin Hannah. I'm the applicant for this, and I think people kind of got a misinterpretation of what I really want to do here. So I'm looking to store my possessions. I own a bunch of cars. I own bikes and motorcycles and boats and, and construction equipment. So I just don't want to leave it outside. Eventually, we live on twenty-six Squire Circle. We will sell our house and move to the same property. So I just want to get myself undercover. It's not going to increase any traffic. Nothing's going to change. Um, I have five guys that work for me. I don't know what people are thinking that I'm going to bring two hundred people over here and I'm going to run the trucks nonstop all the, there, nobody's even going to know that we're even there. That's the reason why I'm putting it five hundred feet off the road. Nobody's going to see this building. It's not going to impact and nobody's even going to know we're there. We're not doing any business there. We're storing our stuff there. And that's the gist of it. That's all we're doing up there. So, thank you.
Anyone else? How about on Zoom? Okay, go ahead. You have to unmute yourself on Zoom.
I would like to get some audio, and we are not able to do this right now, and we haven't heard anything you guys have said. I still can't hear.
Everybody else has heard.
Can you hear us now at all? Can you text her or email her? She can make a comment if she wants. We can hear her. We, she just can't hear us, so she can get her statement in.
I chatted. It didn't work. Yeah, I know. I can't be there. I'd like to hear what's going on. Sorry, people.
I would just mute them and you guys can figure it out.
Okay.
Yeah. I just have to get there.
Any one else in the audience?
We're a cold fellow.
Oh, they said they can hear us, but I can't hear them.
Can you mute them?
Yes, it is. Carry on. You think she's going to make a statement? That's okay. Okay. Um, so. Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Roll call.
Roll call vote. John Karimski?
Yes.
Barbara Conway?
Yes.
Tony Springer?
Yes.
Francis Martindale?
Yes.
Josh Fisher?
Yes.
Howard Schaefer?
Yes.
Michael Peanich?
Yes.
Pamela Pettis?
Yeah.
Motion carried.
Eric, we can call Kevin back up. We have some questions, right? Kevin, can you come back up to the table? So the board might have some questions. Um, one of the letters we got, we see that we didn't read because we've already read it, read it. They were concerned about you having big gas tanks to.
There won't be any gas tanks there either.
That's why I want to, you know.
Yeah.
Get rid of that concern. Anybody else have questions that we're still?
Uh, possibly down the road, but for right now, I just want to get everything stored. So, no, eventually, maybe when we build our own house there, you know, maybe I'll want to heat it at that point. So, but for right now, no.
Another concern was the hours of operation. I guess the logging people came in very early, stayed very late.
Right, yeah.
Didn't do their time. What's your, um, purpose of?
My guys won't go to that. You know, we, we're a custom home builder. We don't meet at a shop and then go to work. So we meet at the job site.
Okay.
So the only person that is really going to be there is myself, my family, my son.
It was just a concern in one of the letters. I don't know if you got them, but.
Yeah, and we're not doing any work there.
Okay.
Very much pissing me off.
Does anybody else have questions? Okay, um, if we want to make any. We already know it's not in the ABA. We already read the, uh, application review, correct? Okay. Now, the board can make any, um, resolutions as to what, you know, as far as the special permit, because it is a special permit. Um, I mean, we can make a resolution that he can't have gas tanks on there, you know, just to protect the town board or the planning board and the town board. If you feel we should make any, uh, oh.
It's a large piece of property and he's not right next to a residence. I don't think we need to make any restrictions. Does anybody have any restrictions they want to suggest?
Hey, straight ones. No, I have no, nothing. I don't, I don't see any issues.
No, I have none.
Agreed.
Down to Josh.
I'll make a motion to accept the special use permit.
Second.
Josh?
Yes.
Accept or approve, Tony?
Approve.
There we go. All right, motion to approve, roll call vote. John Karimski?
Yes.
Barbara Conway?
Yes.
Tony Springer?
Yes.
Josh Fisher?
Yes.
Howard Schaefer?
Yes.
Michael Peanich?
Yes.
Francis Martindale?
I approve. Yeah.
Okay, yeah, sorry. All right, motion carried. Special use approved.
Thank you, Mark.
Boundary line adjustment application, uh, Thomas Welch and Kevin Sumner. Step up to the table, the microphone.
I'm Don Dara, representing Mr. Welch and Mr. Sumner.
Okay, thank you. Before we get started, any information Karen you want to supply us with or?
Um, actually, I think Mr. Derek can probably speak on it better. This was in front of the board back in, I believe, August. You approved this boundary line adjustment and combination of lots. It took it to two, it ended up being two conforming lots. They brought in their Mylar, had it signed, took it to the county to record this. The gentleman that works for the county has left the county employed, so it never got recorded as complete at the county. Now they are looking to adjust one line in what they had previously done. So, and that's highlighted on the maps that you have. But again, Mr. Derek can explain that better than me. But in the end, we're still going to end up with the two lots that we originally proposed. We're just, they're looking to adjust one line.
Two lines, actually.
I'm sorry, two lines.
So, when we set the property corners after the approval, they.
Oh, I got it, huh?
The property owners, uh, saw where the property marker was, where they had asked for it and wanted, uh, Mr. Sumner wanted additional, uh, waterfront. So we've, that's the along the water, we've moved that over eight feet. And then, uh, along Terrace Drive, where you see the carports. That lot line has been adjusted just to provide better access to the carports from Terrace Drive. So it's, the lot sizes changed slightly, still in conformance. The properties haven't been transferred yet. If the board approves this, this will be the final and.
So you're leaving it conforming. You just want to change sides.
Exactly. The two slight adjustments to those lot lines.
Right. Did approve this back in August, what it, as it stands now, they just to change it. Wait a minute. Anybody have any questions about this?
Make a motion to accept the boundary line adjustment for Thomas Welch and Kevin Sumner.
Second.
Second, Matt. I'm sorry. All right. Roll call vote to approve. John Karimski?
Yes.
Well, oh. Um, you have to check to see if anyone needs, wants to call for a public hearing, John.
Make the motion.
Oh, even though we didn't the first time.
Okay, so. Make a motion to, uh, not have a public hearing.
I'll second.
All right, roll call vote. John Karimski?
Yes.
Barbara Conway?
Yes.
Tony Springer?
Yes.
Francis Martindale?
Yes.
Josh Fisher?
Yes.
Howard Schaefer?
Yes.
Michael Peanich?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Make a motion to accept the boundary line adjustment for Thomas Welch and Kevin Sumner.
I'll second.
Roll call vote to approve. John Karimski?
Yes.
Barbara Conway?
Yes.
Tony Springer?
Yes.
Josh Fisher?
Yes.
Howard Schaefer?
Yes.
Michael Peanich?
Yes.
Francis Martindale?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Just so everyone is aware on the board, the Tony Cirillo one, which was item two, is not going to be heard tonight. He's, he is, um, withdrawn it for the evening. He will come back with it at some point, but they're in the process of changing the property and the neighboring property all into one commercial, into one zone. It's one of the, the, the two lots are two split zone lots. And so he, he's, he wanted to wait to bring it in front of the board until, um, it has passed the approval of the town board to change the lot to completely handle a commercial. approval of the town board to change the lot to completely Hamlet commercial.
Okay, next we have a site plan review for the applicant. Um, I'm sure if I could pronounce your name correctly, the last name, Al Gali.
Hello, everyone. Yeah, I'm sorry. Uh, my language is so bad. I appreciate you for your time. Uh, I get, uh, the life, uh, my, to help me in the language.
Did you just, uh, pronounce the first name? So I would.
Mofuck.
Okay. That's what you want to do.
There's an old store on seventy-seven Lake Gav. Um, the land order John said it used to be a massage place and we just want to turn it into a convenience store. It would just be like a small for like your everyday needs. If you forget them, like at the grocery store, milk, eggs, bread, butter, like trash bags, household items, cigarettes, just everyday conveniences.
So this is part of the waterhouse where he has his oil business on one side and the other side would be your store, correct?
Yeah, um, when they brought it up, it showed like two things. So the lease says seventy-nine, but they said that it's labeled as seventy-seven still.
Right, seventy-seven Lake Avenue.
Yeah.
John, you have all the floor plan and, um, the lease there because I don't have a deed. Um, and they indicated parking on a drawing there as well. You're the only one that has those papers. They were just brought in this evening.
There's like six parking spots right on the side of it.
So I'm just going to pass this to the board to take a look at.
While you're looking at that, I did get, I did have to refer this to the county planning department and it came back as the proposed action has no significant inter-community or county-wide impacts.
What about the APA referral?
I don't have a, any letter back from the Adirondack Park. I spoke with them today. They have indicated they submitted.
Yeah.
The paperwork.
I spoke with the APA earlier. They asked me how long it has been a commercial building for. I told them I wasn't sure. Um, I was speaking to, well, it's actually a guy. I was speaking to a guy named Kyle. And I told him it used to be an old massage place, but now like we just want to turn it into a store. And he said he was going to reach out to Lake something to ask how long it's been commercial for.
Okay, so they're probably going to reach out to my office or the assessor's office to, to find out that. But I don't have anything definite back from the Adirondack Park yet. They have submitted paperwork, but we haven't gotten anything back yet.
So I have a question on the parking. How many of those parking belong to the apartments behind it versus that are going to belong to you?
When we went, there's parking right in front of the apartment for it. And then there was parking on the side of the store and behind the store.
Are you going to be selling any kind of food that's not prepackaged that you're going to make?
Like hot food? No, it's just like the everyday convenience, like, yeah.
Stuff like, yeah, from different countries, yeah.
Just stuff like that. Nothing like that. We prepare ourselves.
Maybe stuff, uh, the gift, uh, from the customer, like the coffee.
Just like cups of coffee, but.
But no fryers, no.
No fryers, nothing like that.
I have a question, if I could. And, and we welcome your interest in the town of Lake Luzerne. And maybe this question may be somewhat outside of the scope of what the planning board does, but I can't help but ask the question. Within two hundred feet of this store, there's a Cumberland Farms. And then across the street, there's Joe's. And up the street, there's Stewart's. And then down the street, there's the Dollar General store that have the exact items that, uh, you'd be selling. So, so what would you do to make certain that you're going to be successful in this?
I will get, uh, like, uh, the product from the different country because I saw here the tourist, uh, a lot of tourists, because I was also here in the summer. I like it. And, uh, I like, like, some soda from Japan, from, uh, Arabic country, Middle East, German. Yeah, I can find it just, uh, in Saratoga because that I said is will be good if I open like convenience store from international.
Interesting.
Yeah. The people, the local people.
Yeah.
The tourists.
So it'll be like specialty items and not your regular items you pick up at Joe's or Cumberland Farms, correct?
Yeah.
Are you going to be shipping these items or is it only going to be walk-in for sale?
Just walk in.
Sorry, some words, uh, you know, I have here just like, yeah.
Seager?
Seager exempt.
It's exempt.
Well, we have to.
It's on your, on your cover sheet.
I know, I'm just, well, that was the first thing. I meant, I went down to the second one, the APA referral. That has to be approved before we have to make, it doesn't. What they say, no.
I can't do it.
That's what I'm saying. We had to make it.
Do we accept under the condition of it being approved?
Okay, uh, we also, I guess we might, uh, need a public hearing.
I'll make the motion to not have a public hearing.
I'll second it.
To not have a public hearing, roll call vote. John Kramski?
Yes.
Barbara Conway?
Yes.
Tony Springer?
Yes.
Francis Martindale?
Yes.
Josh Fisher?
Yes.
Howard Schaefer?
Yes.
Michael Panitch?
Yes.
Motion carried.
I'll make a motion to accept the application pending AP day, APA approval.
Second.
All right, motion to approve. John Kramski?
Yes.
Barbara Conway?
Yes.
Tony Springer?
Yes.
Josh Fisher?
Yes.
Howard Schaefer?
Yes.
Michael Panitch?
Yes.
Francis Martindale?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Or you do anything, make sure you get the approval. Looks like we have Barry Pettis up next. Hi, Barry.
Good evening.
Just for the record, um, Barry and Pam Pettis are married. They both own this property. And Pam is our alternate, but she is not acting on the board tonight. So she's not part of this decision.
Okay, so what is it exactly you want to do?
I'd like to put a twelve, fourteen foot wide by fifty-two manufactured home on this property.
How much time has passed between the, the demolition of the last structure on that property?
There was a mobile home on there and it was taken down, I'm going to guess, a couple of years ago.
Couple of years?
Yep. The gentleman that owned it passed away and it, uh, my understanding was from the previous owner that I bought it from, it went to tax auction or whatever. He purchased it, tore the place down. It was not worth doing anything with.
The demolition certificate was dated September thirteenth, twenty twenty-one.
It's going to become your primary residence?
No, I'm, uh, going to rent it to a, uh, family member. I'm doing this for a family member.
Presumably it'll become their long-term home.
Yes, yeah, no.
My question is why that, why not accept that?
This is a ham, this is Hamlet commercial and on the use table, Hamlet commercial for a single-family home requires site view.
So that means we do have to have a public hearing for this, correct?
No, it is optional. The only time it's required is special use permit.
You know, if the proposed location of the septic and the dry well, is that in the same spot as the previous or is it using the old?
I am not going to use it. We dug up the top of it and there's no way I would even consider using it. It was actually in front of the old trailer. Um, I'm actually moving it over more toward the other side of the lot.
Okay.
And we're going to put a new septic behind the mobile home, manufactured home. Um, I have an engineer who's already been at the lot, has given me a preliminary drawing of the septic. Everything works. Uh, I don't have the formal because I'm not going to pay for it until I get approval. I can do this. But, uh, there's no issues with putting a septic on property.
Seager exempt. Uh, we have the non-jurisdictional letter in file. No significant inter-community or county-wide impacts. We do have to vote on whether to have a public hearing or not, even though you don't have to. That is a question we have to answer. So if somebody wants to make a motion.
I think, given the history of the site.
I'll make a motion to waive the public hearing.
I'll second.
Roll call vote. John Kramski?
Yes.
Barbara Conway?
Yes.
Tony Springer?
Yes.
Francis Martindale?
Yes.
Josh Fisher?
Yes.
Howard Schaefer?
Yes.
Michael Panitch?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Bales have any questions?
Do we need to, we have to still accept the application as complete?
Just pa, just pass the, pass the, uh, site plan review, correct? Prove it. Karen?
No, you don't have to accept it as complete. You can move on to whether you want to approve or.
I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Who is that?
Josh? Howard.
Howard, yes. All right, motion to approve. John Kramski?
Yes.
Barbara Conway?
Yes.
Tony Springer?
Yes.
Josh Fisher?
Yes.
Howard Schaefer?
Yes.
Michael Panitch?
Yes.
Francis Martindale?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So are we going to like close the planning board meeting? Public hearing for the new eighteen lot conservation subdivision, Sagamore Drive, Lake Tor Road and Milrose Lane. Property owned by Luzerne Woods and Luzerne Estates. Uh, make a motion that we open a public hearing.
I'll second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, the same, um, as far as the public hearing rules for the first one, anybody who has any comments, step up.
Uh, can I just speak real quick?
Oh, sure.
You, in your packet, I provided you with all of the letters and comments that I had received ahead of time so that you would have time to read those through. I came in tonight, checked my email. I had two more. One is from Rosa Ortiz and Joel Ortiz. And, um, their first sent, and I will provide this to you by email tomorrow. But their, um, first sentence basically says that, um, I'm writing to voice my firm opposition to the proposed development. And then it goes on from there and I will provide that to you for your considerations. The second one is one that I received as well after I, when I came in tonight. Um, and it is, sorry. I don't know where that came from. It, it was, um, written by Carla Williams Betner. And I believe she is here and she brought copies of this letter with her to distribute to you. So I will let her speak for herself when we, when she comes to the mic.
Okay, so the same rules are in place, name, address, and the timer.
Uh, my name is Joan Morales. I live at one seventy-two Sagamore Drive. The members of this board have a responsibility I wouldn't want in a million years to see into the future and know that the recommendations made here will have a positive impact. Irreversible damage to the ecosystem, eighteen septic systems in close proximity to the town aquifer, anywhere from thirty or more vehicles each day traversing a road with little shoulder and no sidewalks, overuse of a small beach that routinely has less than desirable coliform levels at the end of the summer season already, and the extinction of a lifestyle that has been enjoyed for generations. These and more will be forever impacted by this development and can never be reversed. Beyond that, the marked indifference displayed by those seeking this development causes me great concern. To cite a small example, at the April twenty-fourth meeting of this board, a developer representative stated that residents' deeds do not include beach rights, only lake access. Having lived on Sagamore since nineteen eighty-nine, this information was new to me. So I went home and checked my deed, which states, and I quote, "together with the right to use said beach and to bathe in the waters of Lake Luzerne," unquote. This deed was duly filed in the Warren County Clerk's office. Researching the deeds connected to the beach on Camtech Road would have taken about an hour and would not have caused the developer's agent to misrepresent beach and/or lake access facts to this board. My question is, what else has the developer's agent skimmed over, given cursory attention to, and most importantly, misrepresented to this board? Again, this board has a monumental decision to make and I trust that the members will consider the importance of quality of life. The proposed development is far beyond the scope of a small-town planning board. Please do not let the, the developers or their agents baffle you with, just don't take their word as gospel. If they are willing to overlook or misconstrue small details like deeded beach rights, who is to say there are not more substantive faults in the process? I can only imagine the mountain of paperwork and detail this proposed development entails, as well as the countless hours board members have already spent on this proposal. Again, this board has a monumental decision to make and I trust the members will consider the importance of quality of life as they weigh that decision. Thank you.
Thanks, John.
I have my paper in front of me. Sorry.
You, you don't need any paper. That's all right.
Allen thirty-one Pierpont Road.
Speak closer to the microphone.
Okay, so I am a Realtor for thirty years and a resident since nineteen eighty-six up at the, uh, old hilltop of those that know me. Um, I, what I like to know is, I'll speak into several of the, uh, families that go home. uh, families that go home after Labor Day, they don't even know anything about this that's going on. And these are people that live very close to Melrose. I think the, the town owes it to people, not only summer residents, but also year, all the year-round residents. Our taxes are going up. We all know what's gonna come down the pike, okay? But somebody owes it to these people who are not in this area for the rest of the winter until Memorial Day. It's not fair to them. They pay as much taxes as all the locals do. And I don't think that's right. Am I against this? Yes. I've seen a lot of things happening. My other question is, and this will be the last, because I'll get on a roll. I like to know, why has he chosen Lake Luzern? He wants to do the big bucks? Why don't he go to Clifton Park? Why don't he go to Queensberry? Yes, there are beautiful homes on the lake that are a million dollars. I get it. But the majority of houses in Luzern don't come anywhere near the pricey houses in Clifton Park or Queensberry. Why does he have to come to this town? I'm, I'm really curious about this. Thank you.
Thanks.
Good evening. I'm Carla Bitner from Bartlett Pontiff Stewart and Rhodes in Glens Falls.
Could I ask you who you represent?
Yep, that was my next sentence. I'm here representing um, Art Havikhorst, who owns property at eight Camp Tech Road. I do have, um, as Karen indicated, I do have correspondence that I sent by email today, and I brought hard copies for all the members so you could have. You don't have to read it now, it's okay. I'd like to thank the board for the opportunity to sit here and express Mr. Havikhorst's concerns. He's currently out of the country, or he would be here himself, so he's asked me to come and represent him. Within, as, as Mr. Havikhorst is a neighbor and owns property right on Camp Tech Road, this is concerning to him. We want to commend the planning board for what you did at the last meeting in October when you saw that this was a complex project and you sent it to your town-designated engineer. Um, that was the main concern of my client, that this is a large project. There's some significant topographical issues. There's some significant environmental concerns raised. Um, and you heard one of the neighbors uh, speak to one of those concerns being the wastewater. I have a lot in my letter. I'm not gonna take all of my time today to, to identify it for you. I just wanna hit a couple different points to it. Um, first, um, we think it's very important that this, this, I almost called you a court. You only, you just got elevated, um, that this board uh, recognizes that there are going to be eighteen septic systems on here, and that is a, a significant problem. That they're gonna have to get DOH Realty Subdivision approval because they are a cluster subdivision. Um, in the event that the se- the site plan goes through, I would assume that that would be a condition of approval. Um, it is sand, it, it goes straight down. Um, I don't know the exact perk results, but I'm sure it's quick. Uh, that can be a concern for that area. Another concern is that in the area, it is a huge depression. The, their depression in the middle is below lake level. So there's a lot of, and I don't pretend to be an engineer at all, I'll let EDP take that over, but there's a significant amount of engineering that had to be done for this project. A couple of the other concerns that um, we do have are the water. This is right over the aquifer. Your two wells for your water district are right there. So again, the wastewater going into the aquifer. Now that's concerning because folks get uh, the town water. I know you take some of your town water from the village of Corinth, but you have a lot right there. Uh, I, we have questions with respect to whether this is going to require an expansion of your water district. Um, or if it's going to require uh, if it's already in the water district. If it requires an expansion, you're gonna have to go to the town board and get an ex- an extension of the water district. That was, that should be a condition of your approval. Uh, similarly, the dedication of the roads. Um, there was talk about road dedication. Um, I do a lot of municipal work for other uh, clients, and I'm familiar with how you de- dedicate roads. That's a condition. That's a condition that's put on these. Um, the, one of the uh, a big concerns is what happens afterwards. This is a phased project. This is a six-year project, and it indicate, what happens if they don't sell? You know, I think those questions need to be asked. That if they don't sell, is he going to retain them? And Airbnb them, VRBO them, short-term rental them, and what is that gonna do to the quality of life nearby? You know, Mr. Havikhorst has access over uh, Camp Tech Road to go down to the beach, and that was discussed earlier. I was just out there. Yes, it was nighttime, but it's hard to walk on that right now. Um, so I think that is part of this project because the applicant has indicated they're gonna get deed, they're gonna get uh, deed rights. They're gonna get water rights to that. My client has those rights already. There's about seven or eight people that have those rights, and now we're gonna add eighteen more. Um, there's a lot here. There's a lot to unpack. And I think this board is sophisticated enough that you know that, and you're willing to take the time and really look at this project. This is a lar- the largest project, I think it was Mount Luzern or something like that it was called. This is the largest project since then. So um, I, I, we have a list of questions in our submission. Um, I think a lot of these could be answered by the engineer, uh, and I think it would be great to see that report and come back, and hopefully a lot of the questions are answered. But we really think that this board needs to take a hard look at this, not just the hard look under Seeker, but a hard look and see how this is going to help uh, what it's gonna do to the character of the neighborhood. Thank you.
Good evening. Hi Chairman. My name's Claudia Bremer. I'm Deputy Director of Protect the Adirondacks. We are dedicated to the protection and stewardship of the public and private lands in the Adirondack Park. And we have members here in the area, and I also know that there are civic organizations here in town who do care a lot about environmental protection, and that's why we're here tonight to express our concerns about that. I did send you two written letters. Um, I mailed hard copies to you, so hopefully they're already in your packet. I know Karen had them. So I really appreciate you um, taking the time to read through those. I won't regurgitate everything that's in there tonight, but I just wanted to highlight a few of our concerns. One um, was mentioned already that the depression in the middle of the site, that is actually a wetland in the middle of the site. And if you look, it's a little bit hard because they did not actually um, indicate it very well on the map, which I, I won't say why, you know, why that was, but if you look at the wetlands map and look where they have that designated, and then look on their site plan map and see where they have the road and other utilities, it goes right next to the wetland. So my suspicion is that it actually is going through the wetland because the wetland delineation was done in January or February, when it would be very hard to find wetland vegetation under the snow. So I find that very suspect, and I would like you to take a closer look at that as you're going through your process. The other major concern that we have is about the shoreline access lot. You're going to be increasing the people, as was mentioned, it's eighteen lots, so however many people that is per lot, multiply that, and you have all those people going down to the beach. Um, there's also a notation on the site plan map that talks about UTVs, a UTV path. And is that actually going to be providing access down to the beach with UTVs? Utility task vehicles? Couldn't remember what the word was.
Golf carts.
Um, you're also talking about noise and just overall disturbance happening at the beach lot, and how is that impacting the surrounding landowners? And in addition, the lake itself, are we talking about any sort of conditions or mitigation for the water pollution that may be happening? Not just because of the disturbance, but also, you know, do you have a bathroom down there? How far away is it to walk to back to people's houses? Are they gonna do that? Um, and the last thing I wanna mention, and then I'll just summarize, is that the open space calculation and the clustering plan is really not legitimate. They are using little slivers of land in between each of the lots, like that is not open space. What you want for an open space is to cluster all of the lots together at one end and then have a large, unfragmented piece of land that is being protected. That's not what you have here. You have little tiny slivers around each of the lots that they're calling open space, and how are they gonna protect that going forward to have a landowner not cut or, you know, disturb the area all the way to the edge of their lot? It's going to be very difficult the way they have it set up. So to summarize, I really think you need to take a closer look, not just the hard look under Seeker, as was mentioned, but a really tough look at this project. It's a big project. Um, reduce the number of lots, remove the lots that are near the town watershed property. Am I almost done? Attorney Kessane, I'm sorry, I'm trying to keep my eye on you.
A minute thirty left.
Thank you. Um, so remove those lots that are closest to the town's watershed lands. They're right there. They're abiding the town's watershed lands. Improve the shoreline protections significantly. And when you get to Seeker, issue a positive declaration for those environmental impacts that you need to take a harder look at so that you require the applicant to go back, prepare an environmental impact statement on those issues, and really take a harder look at it. And then lastly, I don't know exactly where you are in the procedure tonight, but I would hope that you um, keep the public hearing open as you consider comments and um, any changes to the project as you go through your deliberations. Thank you.
In under the wire.
Okay, I'm a newbie to this. Uh, basically, I purchased uh, one forty-five Sagamore Drive uh, back last November.
Could we have your name, please?
My name's Kevin Boyd. Um, I, we were basically up here this weekend, and on Sunday morning, we got a notification stuck in the door with the lot plan, and also that there was gonna be a hearing tonight. Um, I know that uh, as was stated before, there's a portion of the people that are living on that street of Sagamore that are basically seasonal or that are there for nine months out of the year. And at this point in time, they never received this notification. I contacted the uh, Camp Tech Association by email yesterday, but I hadn't gotten an answer in terms of like where is there like lake rights going to be? Is it going to be on the Camp Tech property? I don't know. So my main issue is, is that it's it's a situation that I saw that this thing was proposed back in April, and they're only notifying the people now in November. And it's not being presented to the entire population in this that it's, it's going to be affected by. So I think that this should really be tabled until all these people know about this issue, or that there's a and also looking at the environmental impact study to see whether it's gonna be feasible for them to do this. Thank you.
Anyone else? It just as Mary said, our public hearing will stay open. Indefinitely right now. So when we have our I don't think they can hear us or speak. Okay, good.
Good evening. My name is Aileen Sheel. My sister Colleen and I own one sixty-nine Sagamore Drive and the adjacent lot, which is diagonally across from the properties in question. So since I'm learning that the comment period is gonna remain open, I'll just keep my comments brief and send them following the meeting. But my sister and I are the third generation of our family to own these properties, as they've been in our family since the early nineteen seventies, so for over fifty years. And my sister and I have very similar concerns to those that have been raised by my neighbors. And we would ask that the town do more thorough verifying, as our neighbor Joan had mentioned, of what's being represented to this board and to the town generally. We appreciate the effort made at the last meeting to have the town engineer look at the property, but we would ask essentially for a fine-tooth comb to be used to go through all steps of what is being proposed. And we have serious concerns about the amount of additional people and traffic that this will be bringing to the property, including the rights that will be allowed for the deeded beach access, which our properties do currently have. And I will send our additional comments following the meeting. Thank you.
Good evening. Brandon Ferguson from Environmental Design Partnership. I'm here tonight with uh, Mike Roman, who's one of the applicants. Um, and Eric Moses, who's the other applicant, actually on the uh, Zoom call as well. Um, just kind of hearing the comments, just kind of wanna go through some things with you guys quick. Um, just kind of reminder, this is a thirty-three acre parcel. Um, it's, it's made up of seven existing parcels. This is within the Hamlet zoning district. And it's also within the APA's Hamlet Zone, which is um, which they define as the areas that they've determined be adequate for um, expansion um, and development. This is an eighteen lot single-family subdivision. It was designed as a conservation subdivision, and the reason it was is because there are steep slopes on the site, and we wanted to minimize the impact of those areas. Um, we also wanted to keep forested areas on the site and protect them um, to maintain buffers between the proposed lots and existing lots. The roadway system, we have designed per town standards. And we've been trying to set up a meeting with uh, the Highway Superintendent to um, start discussing the possibility of road dedication. Um, the, the trail system on site would be a permeable surface trail system. Um, and the tension at this point is to allow pedestrian movement um, throughout the neighborhood. Um, water, we are looking to extend public water. Um, it would actually loop down um, the Melrose Lane extension um, from Sagamore over to um, Melrose Lane and Melrose Lane, uh, maybe the eight-inch water line that would um, meet New York State um, requirements for sizing flows and fire code. Wastewater on the site with the individual onsite septic systems, as mentioned, the soils are well-draining soils to depths with groundwater depths of greater than eight feet in most portions of the site. Um, these will be reviewed by DOH as well, the septic systems. This is a Realty subdivision, so we do have to get their approval for it. They come out, they look at the soils, make sure they can meet the standard requirements and make sure those septic systems can go there without any impact. Um, also with this being a water system, there are no individual wells really in the area. Everybody's on that water system as far as we know. Um, we're also, our property lines over a thousand feet from the town water wells. And we actually kind of look at the map here. Behind lot thirteen fourteen actually goes uphill a little bit before it drops off to the wetland. Everything on site really drains to that center area. As far as wetlands go on the site, we've had back and forth with the APA, and we've had back and forth with the Army Corps. The two wetland areas that are on-site are actually isolated wetlands that do not meet the definition of APA wetlands. They're under an acre, and they are not connected um, or do not have interchange of surface water with a larger water body. Um, that's how APA defines their wetlands. And Army Corps has also determined that they are isolated wetlands, and therefore non-jurisdictional. Stormwater on the site would be developed according to New York State D C regulations, and that's being reviewed as part of the town engineers um, purview of the project as well. And then I think that pretty much sums up what I wanted to say, so.
Did you wanna make any comments or no?
No, I'm just here to uh, answer any additional questions that you may have. Um, but I'll also note that the um, the, I know a lot of people have been talking about the land uh, for the lake, and that is not part of this property or this development. So just wanna make sure that's clear.
At this point, we're not asking questions. It's just to hear from the public. Okay. Thank you.
I understand you can do that after the meeting, or you can contact them outside of here. Uh, there are informations on their application, right?
Correct. You can boil that information from my office.
I mean, they are also here, so you can talk to them after the meeting.
Um, Kevin Boyd, one forty-five Sagamore again. I just wanna raise a concern in terms of uh, in terms of historical situation in this area. I know my son is an archaeologist. He basically works for a company that basically does archaeology digs for large plots of land like this. So I'm hoping that the town board is concerned with that also because the northeast is a highly area, high area of historical value, especially with Saratoga being so close by.
Any other comments? Okay, as I stated, we keep the public hearing open. As of right now, we won't be taking any more comments today. The next meeting that we actually have, we may not have one in December if there's no agenda, but if we do, well, the public hearing will be available at a certain time during that, you know, if you want to make comments going forward. Correct? Basically, I see. Right. If we have a meeting. Okay. On the eighteenth of December. If we have a meeting. Okay, so that's the end of that.
Continue to watch the website. We do post the meetings on the website and the agenda. I try to get it up as early as I can, but it's required to be up within twenty-four hours of this meeting.
Karen, is there anything we have to do with this particular, you know, with, with this subdivision at this time, or we're just waiting?
What's?
It's gonna be probably till January, right?
The seeker, the lead agency stuff went out yesterday. We have to wait thirty days. So I, I think we're going to miss the next meeting by one day. So it's going to probably be January. However, I, I believe that the engineer is working on his report, and he's going to list any concerns that he has in the report. I don't have it yet, but I'm expecting to get it fairly soon. I, I think we may have that by the next meeting, if we have the meeting.
Okay. If he has it, do we have a meeting for that, or do you have to actually wait? Because he's the lead agency, right?
Okay.
I guess that's it. Next on the agenda is acceptance of minutes. Everybody get their minutes from October. Do they sign them by email? Does anybody have any?
I had a question. I know that Francis arrived late, but it says that he's absent at the top.
When we first started, right?
Yeah. Said he arrived, so, right.
Any additions or deletions to the minutes?
I'll make the motion to accept the October twenty-third minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bush Gary?
Any older new business, Karen?
No, I have nothing.
Mary?
Anybody have any new, older, new business?
No. Eighteenth is the next meeting if we have it.
December eighteenth, right. December eighteenth. On the twenty-fifth, we're not gonna have one on that one. I mean, we could.
Good.
I'm not ready to meet.
If, anything that has to be submitted, has to be submitted a week before the eighteenth now.
Actually, more than a week before.
Has to be submitted the Monday before. So it's like ten days before, at noon.
Because I might have.
Unless that Monday's a holiday, then it's nine days.
Okay, in that case, I make a motion, we adjourn. Second. All in favor?
Aye.